And get started, everyone ready? All right. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 8th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. I will make notice that we met in executive session just prior to this meeting to discuss matters of legal and real estate. Consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda? May I get a motion to, oh, staff, is there anything staff would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Anything the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Public participation. I'd like to invite the public to come up and speak. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Hand and I live in Ravens Cliff. I'm here tonight with a group of my neighbors in the back here just to make a brief public comment regarding the proposed small cell deployment in our neighborhood. Earlier today, I sent to the board a letter signed by forty-one residents of Ravens Cliff voicing our strong opposition to the small cell proposal. While we each oppose the proposal for our own reasons and we really do sincerely appreciate Commissioner Abel's effort to look into the issue for us, we're united in our position that it's not acceptable as an option for our neighborhood. At the January twenty-eighth Board of Commissioners meeting, it was represented that the neighbors are in favor of this proposal. I'm here tonight to say on the record that that's not the case with regard to Ravens Cliff. Prior representations of our support reference the letter signed by residents wanting improved cell service. To be clear, that letter was years old and was a generic statement of support for improved service. In no way should that letter be characterized as support for this new proposal. The specifics of the new proposal haven't been well understood by the residents in our neighborhood. When I started this outreach effort about two weeks ago, I realized most of us were unaware what was actually being proposed. Beyond an industry sales presentation by the company that would like to deploy the small cells, we've been provided with no further information about the proposal. Our opposition reflects concerns at the negative impact of the small cell facilities would bring to our neighborhood, representing costs which greatly outweigh the modest benefit of improved cell service. The service has always been inconsistent in our neighborhood, but it's been broadly complemented by Wi-Fi internet, Wi-Fi calling, in-home boosters, and landlines. On the other hand, the costs associated with the small cell deployment are numerous and I feel they're dramatic. They include a degradation of the aesthetics and character of our neighborhood, having to live with questions about safety and health effects that we just don't know the answers to, and declining property values associated with these bad aesthetics and the fears about safety. The cost benefit of this proposal simply doesn't add up. I won't speak for my neighbors regarding their specific concerns, but I will speak to two of my own. Ravens Cliff has underground power and cable lines and no above-ground infrastructure, except for a handful of fifteen-foot rustic streetlights that blend in seamlessly with our neighborhood. Crown Castle's proposal calls for the removal of four existing streetlights and the installation of twenty-five to thirty-foot metal or fiberglass structures that are much wider and more fortified than what we currently have. They have attached equipment boxes about eight feet off the ground with a cooling fan that will make a humming noise. On top will be the canister housing the small cell antennas. There's no question in my mind that these substantial new structures would dramatically change the appearance and the character of our neighborhood. They will not be placed atop an existing utility pole and therefore they're fundamentally different from and can't be compared to the other sites currently existing in Radnor. As aesthetics are negatively impacted, property values are sure to be negatively impacted as well. I also have serious concerns about the long-term health effects of living in such close proximity to one of these facilities. I know I'm not alone in this concern amongst my neighbors. There are a large number of peer-reviewed experiments and studies showing the biological and health effects of radio frequency radiation on the human body. Based on this body of research, the American Academy of Pediatrics, just to give one example, has advised the federal government the current FCC radiation standards don't account for the unique vulnerability of pregnant women and children. So for me, as a mother of young children who would sleep and play just feet from one of the proposed sites, it's a scary thought and a risk I can't accept. So in closing, after looking into this, it's my understanding that small cell technology is made for high-traffic areas and central business districts, not for a rustic residential neighborhood like ours with no traffic outlet and little through-traffic. Now, while some of us stand to gain modestly from improved cell service, we stand to lose much, much more. A loss of aesthetic beauty, a loss of peace of mind that we live in an environment that is safe for ourselves and our children, and a loss in the value of our homes. The proposal simply brings far greater negative impacts to the same group of us it's intended to help. It doesn't make sense. So on behalf of the residents signed on to the letter you received, I appeal to you, not just as our elected commissioners, but as neighbors, as homeowners, as parents, and ask you to abandon the proposal to bring small cells to Ravens Cliff. Thank you for your time, for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening, Sarah Pilling, Garrett Avenue, Ready for One Hundred. So I'm wearing my Ready for One Hundred shirt today because I wanted to let you know and those at home who might be listening of some pretty significant stuff that's happening in Radnor Township for what I'm going to call Earth Month because it seems to be spread out. This Thursday at seven o'clock, Dr. Michael Mann, who's one of the foremost glaciologists in the world, is going to be speaking at Villanova. He's receiving an award and he will lecture after that. It is well worth attending. It's at seven o'clock in the Connolly Cinema. You can park in the parking garage through, access it through the second entrance on Eithan Avenue. It's free and let me tell you, it'd be a wonderful experience. But that's not all. On the twenty-fourth of April, Villanova's going to have a Sustainability Fair and Market and the Ready for One Hundred in Sierra, among other vendors and nonprofits, are going to participate. From noon until two, I believe, at what they call the Oreo, which is behind Connolly. And then at six o'clock, Dr. John Balbus is going to be speaking in the nursing school building, which is Driscoll Hall, on climate change and public health. This gentleman is a senior advisor to WHO. And so there's another opportunity. And then, not last nor least, on Friday, April twenty-sixth, media is going to have a rally for the earth and they're inviting all Delaware County people to come. Wear whatever the shirt it is you have. They're gathering at the Borough Hall at six and at the Courthouse steps at seven to call on county council to be doing more for climate change. So I just thought you'd like to know about it. It's an exciting time and a busy time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there any additional public comment this evening? No? Okay. Well, thank you all very much for coming out. All right, Mr. Zankowski.
Thank you, Madam President. On Thursday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, the Radnor Police, along with many other law enforcement agencies, were called to the Wawa on Sugar Town Road with reports of a shooting. Upon entering, it was discovered that there was one fatality and no other injuries. Our sympathies are with the family and friends of Stephanie that are grieving at this time under such an awful condition. Being firsthand, unseen, and watching Superintendent Flanagan work and take command of the situation as well as the Radnor Police Department and the officers involved, detectives, I want to commend them for the job that was done, the response, the professionalism that was taking place during an uncertain time there, but there was great control and command of the situation. We know that at times it's difficult not to be able to get information out, but I do want to recognize the men and women of our police department in their response and what they had done and also to Superintendent Flanagan for the job that he did, maintaining that scene there, organizing, working with the different agencies, working closely with the District Attorney's Office. Again, I just want to commend Chris and the entire Radnor Police Force under such an awful situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zankowski. Does any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just add that, and I spoke with Superintendent Flanagan. First of all, kudos, I mean, I spoke with another officer and you had this guy within two hours of the shooting. So I think, I don't think, I know there was excellent police work by different branches of law enforcement. So it really was a job well done. The other thing that I'd like to bring to attention is that this township building and hopefully other township buildings throughout the area can and they should be used as a safe space when it comes to custody drop-off, maybe if you're buying something on Craigslist or you have to meet somebody and you don't know who that person is. I know that, I spoke with the superintendent, you're working on lighting areas as well as video and I think that's important to get the word out that day or night, you can come here and if you do have a question with some kind of exchange, dial nine-one-one and then hopefully an officer can come outside or meet you there. So that's a very, very important safety issue because hopefully we'll never, ever have anything like this happen again, not only in Radnor, but anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farah. Yeah, I think this board joins Township Manager Zankowski in commending the police. And thank you, Superintendent Flanagan, great job and to you and your staff. All right, announcements of boards and commission vacancies.
So thank you to everybody who already volunteers for the township and for those of you who are looking to get more involved. We have vacancies on the Board of Health, we have one vacancy there. Six vacancies on Carfac, which is the Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee. One vacancy on the Code Appeals Board. Four vacancies on SWIMAC and one vacancy on the Rental Housing Appeals Board. If you have any interest in any of those, please get in touch with the Township Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Larkin. Before we move into Parks and Rec and the body of our meeting, I just want to acknowledge Tammy Cohen and her staff as well as our police department and I'm sure Public Works was involved in the extravaganza yesterday. It was pretty amazing. I've never seen so many eggs in my life or so many kids or families. So it was an outstanding event, a beautiful day. And thank you also to Villanova for their participation in it as well. But nice job, nice job, Tammy.
Yeah, Tammy, and I'd like to throw in there, Ben from Finance was the Easter Bunny. So Finance was there too. And according to Ben, the Easter Bunny, he said it was very hot. He said it was a lot worse than the Easter Bunny outfit than it was in the Santa. So thank you to everybody.
Great job. All right, on to Ordinance twenty-nineteen dash oh-four, adoption, authorizing an addendum to the lease agreement by and between Radnor Township School District and Radnor Township for the property known as Emlyn-Tonnell Park. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, who's taking this? Mr. Nocini or is this, or, oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Rice?
I'm happy to take this. Or, I'm sorry, if you want to take it, John. So this is an item that was before you at the last meeting on March twenty-fifth, which was introduced as it should be as an ordinance. The township and the school district are subject to a lease. I believe that was initiated in nineteen eighty-six relative to the Emlyn-Tonnell Park property over in Garrett Hill. And the school district has prepared a lease addendum, an addendum to the lease. Basically, that's before you, that would require adoption in order for the township to build a comfort station at the site there. So this is something that has been approved by the school district. I know we introduced it on March twenty-fifth and it's before you tonight for adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Okay, is there any commissioner comment? To the motion on the floor? Sean? Any staff comment? Any public comment to the motion on the floor? And I'll call the vote. All those in favor of Ordinance twenty-nineteen dash oh-four, adoption of the lease agreement between Radnor Township School District and Radnor Township for the property known as Emlyn-Tonnell Park, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Resolution twenty-nineteen dash thirty-four, authorizing the purchase of a comfort station for Emlyn-Tonnell Park. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Cohen?
Sure. So this resolution, two thousand nineteen thirty-four, is authorization to purchase the comfort station for Emlyn-Tonnell Park. It's a building that is a prefabricated structure that would be purchased by a company called Romtech, pre-engineered building structures. They're an industry leader, been in business for about forty years, common to a lot of local municipalities in the area, and really throughout the country. So we feel great about the purchase with them and recommending them. It would be a building that's approximately seven hundred square feet in size, will contain two unisex restrooms as well as a small storage and concessionary area that would be operated and utilized by Radnor-Wayne Little League. This, I just want to make sure that this is clear, that this is just the purchase of the building. So this is a project that will be subsequently bid for construction. So the engineering and development alongside of this, after we make the purchase, will occur and it will be back before this board at a subsequent meeting, hopefully before fall for a ward of construction. I know it was a long process. I know this is something that, this is a purchase for the site that's been discussed for a really long time, probably well before my time here in Radnor, something that's been desired by the community and the neighbors for a long time. So it's a very exciting opportunity here tonight to have it before you finally. It's been a long time. I know when we first debuted the topic back in April formally at the Board of Commissioners, there were some concerns by the residents in regards to the size and wanting increased input in terms of the location. And we spent the last year basically kind of going through that process, having public meetings, discussions with the school district, the residents, the neighbors. It's been a collaborative process and I can say as we've emerged through it, I think everyone's happy with the location, the size of the building, the programmatic features within the building. And I want to thank everybody for being part of that process and all those meetings. I don't want to leave out the Parks and Recreation Board either because I know they were very influential in taking this on when it was referred back to them. And I'm sure members of Radnor-Wayne Little League would be here tonight if they could, but I think they're out coaching right now. So excited to get this approved. And as I mentioned, we'd be back for construction in a subsequent month. Hopefully start construction sometime in the fall.
Did you order the optional tree protection for this building?
Not for this one, no. Hopefully we'll be able to mitigate that ahead of time.
Is there any commissioner comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Tammy, thank you. I know that you worked tirelessly on this. Your presentation to the school board, coming around to the park, meeting with the neighbors, that was very, very important and instrumental in getting this done. Again, I'd also like to thank the Parks Board and everybody, including the neighbors, the people that live on Garrett Hill, pardon me, on Garrett Avenue and the neighbors in Garrett Hill for getting this done. This has, as you said, been a long time coming, at least twenty years, give or take. Was it nineteen ninety-nine? I'm sure Sarah can. Nineteen ninety-eight, okay. So twenty-one years, we'll argue. So it's about time that there's a suitable place where both little boys and little girls can use the bathroom. So thank you to everyone involved in this. It's greatly appreciated.
Any other commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution twenty-nineteen dash thirty-four, authorizing the purchase of a comfort station for Emlyn-Tonnell Park, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Yay, we have a comfort station. Small victories. Okay, discussion and possible motion regarding the corner area landscaping tree replacement and paving of adjacent street parking in the Wayne Business Overlay District. Mr. Zankowski leading this, oh, Mr. Nocini.
Thank you, Madam President. So the representatives of the WBA were here at the previous meeting and they put forth three items. Remove approximately sixty existing street trees and replace with sixty Cleveland Select Pears. Resurface all street-adjacent municipal parking areas in the Wayne Business Overlay District and at the planning beds located intersections, basically plan it like the township building. And the board asked for some additional information. So we have a, some high-level estimates, really just for magnitude, to show what the paving and trees could cost. And my colleague, Steve McNellis, was able to get a proposal from Mayfield Gardens to do the corner and intersection plannings, which is all laid out in that memo. If you have any questions or comments.
So I'm going to move, I guess I'll make two motions. The first is I'd like to table the question of the street repaving and the trees for today and push them onto the agenda for the twenty-ninth. The price tags for those are high enough that I think that we need to talk about them in the context of the larger capital budget. We obviously need to have a second and have a vote on that, but by way of foreshadowing, I'm also going to move to just go ahead and pay for the thirty thousand dollars that we're looking for for the corners because it's a small enough price tag. WBA has been asking us for long enough to do this. I know they've met with every one of us and they're right. This is a township obligation and they look tired, so.
Madam President, if I may?
Yes.
We have submitted that cost to the Radnor Enhancement Trust for their funding, which would seem to meet their criteria for funding. As soon as we get a response on that, we will let this board know.
And that's for the corners? I'm sorry.
That would be for the thirty thousand dollars.
Do you anticipate a response by the twenty-ninth when we do our capital meeting?
My hope is that we will hear a response by midweek.
Okay, in that case, I would amend my original motion to table the first two to table all three. If we haven't heard from them or if they've said no by the twenty-ninth, I'm going to be lobbying pretty hard that we make this a priority because it's so little money in the larger context of the township budget, I should say, and because I think it will make such a large impact. But if we can get the funds from another source, I'm perfectly happy to give them a couple of days to try and come through with it.
So then we could anticipate, if you do hear from them on our next agenda, to have an actual, something for us to vote on with regards to the corners and then still talk about the trees and the paving?
Correct. We can do that. It'll be on the next agenda. We can hear that and you would just then support the Enhancement Trust paying for that. That's all that would be required.
And I know I've seen some back and forth. Will the tree, the tree proposal, will that go to Shade Tree first before it comes back to us? Is there time for that to happen?
Yes, that's correct. We will involve them at the next meeting and I'll ask Steve if that can be placed on their agenda too for their input.
Very good. All right, so then we have nothing to add on at this moment.
I would suggest that we approve the twenty-nine thousand and change. And the assumption would be that it would be reimbursed or paid for out of the Radnor Enhancement. But there's no reason to not approve that tonight. If we're confident that they'll approve it, it could take another four weeks or two weeks before we hear back and deal with that. And I think that there's sufficient general fund revenue, general fund cash to pay for it if there's any issue.
Just for point of order and I'll ask John to confirm this. The board has the authority up to twenty-five thousand. So if the board would want to authorize twenty-five thousand, because if not, then that would actually have to go out for bid.
So is this?
So this would be something that the board can authorize up to twenty-five thousand if it doesn't move forward and then Steve McNellis, who's been working with Mayfield Gardens, could go back to them and let them know that they have twenty-five thousand on this, that the board has authorized for this work.
But if RECT comes through, then we'd go with the full.
Absolutely, go with the full.
Do we have, do we have twenty-five thousand dollars? Bill?
Do we have twenty-five thousand dollars? Yes. Do we have twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this specific item? No. But the board has the authority to direct the spend. It'll just be a variance in our budget.
Have you checked the couch cushions?
Most of them, yes.
Well, would this be supplanting something else? I mean, do we need to understand that or?
Well, there was nothing else in the capital budget. So, no, it'd be, that's not on the table either. So I, yeah, I mean, we have the reserves in general fund. The amount is not going to knock us down by itself. I always pause because, you know, thirty thousand here, fifty thousand there, a hundred thousand there. Next thing you know, it's a much bigger problem. But in a vacuum, this amount by itself wouldn't significantly impact us. And hopefully the Enhancement Trust comes through so this whole conversation's moved.
Yeah, I expect Enhancement Trust will pay for this in the end. But I'm confused about, the board can authorize any amount, right? What's twenty-five thousand? What are you talking about?
Don't have to go out for bid.
It's in the charter. No bid contracts. Anything expenditure, expenditures of twenty-five thousand and above can only be authorized by the board pursuant to a contract made with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. So you have some thresholds in this, in the charter, Rich.
So this wasn't bid? I thought this was bid.
No.
They just got a quote, right? Stevie just got a quote from Mayfield.
I move that we authorize the expenditure of up to twenty-five thousand dollars on this product, this project, assuming that, or not assuming, and should RECT fund the project, we'll go with the full-scale project, not have to downsize.
I'll second that motion.
One question on that. If the Enhancement Trust pays for it, does it still have, still have to be bid out? No, no, wouldn't have to be because that's private funds at that point.
So they're a project then?
All right, is there any comment to the motion on the floor? Yeah, what we've had? Is there any staff comment to the motion on the floor? Any public comment?
I'd like to be sure that you are drawn to the asterisk on the second page wherein I quote, "The arborist has noticed that it would be advisable to perform any planting in the fall, specifically September of this year. Also was noted that installing a monoculture of trees is not advisable in the event of blight specific to this, to that species of tree. And pears are susceptible to blight." The old pears forms we had became very broad, so they blocked the vision. And if you pardon the expression, they had tight crotches and they would break. So they are not a desirable tree. As a horticulturist, I would question sixty Cleveland Select Pears because some of these pears break through and actually produce a little nugget of a pear, which means there's something on the sidewalk. So I would encourage you all to get the advice of Shade Tree and perhaps have a variety of trees. They will last longer and you're not susceptible to blight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, I tend to, I agree with that comment. And why would, has John weighed, has the arborist weighed in on that? Because when we came out to Morris Road, he was the first one to say, "We need three or four different trees if we're going to do something."
Commissioner, that was just what the WBA, I just basically paraphrased exactly what the WBA had said. They said sixty Cleveland Select Pears. But you, the board has voted and we've been in contact with the Shade Tree and John Hospack. So the thought would be they will provide a list based on those locations to come back and it would not be a monoculture. It would not be, and it will be trees very specific to being able to live in that urban environment.
And WBA has only asked for Cleveland pear because there was a plan like ten, fifteen years ago that called for Cleveland pear. They're not wedded to that. They're not particularly pushing for that. That's just what they were told originally it was going to be. So they're asking, could we have whatever it was it was supposed to be?
Well, they're a poor choice.
Sure, and they actually wrote to me earlier today saying exactly that. They'd be perfectly happy to not do a monoculture. They recognize all of the concerns that you've just brought up. You won't see any fight from them or us, I think.
Good.
And Eileen Brett from the Shade Tree Commission weighed in. I think we all got a memo from her and she said that they would be more than happy to look at this and take it up. to look at this and take it up. So that's why Mr. Norrisini and I just said we would definitely give it to them.
It would be awful to put in trees that in 10 years you have to start taking out because of the way the growth, or you get a blight and what, sorry, but with climate change, you're going to get more diseases of trees. So you really need to plant a variety of trees.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other public comment to the motion on the floor? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of, John, you might have to repeat it, the board approving 25, up to $25,000 to support the plan to landscape the corners in Wayne?
A downsized plan.
Downsized plan.
And that should RECT come through, we'll go with this full design.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Resolution 2019-22, adopting the goal-setting report of the Organizational Resources Group dated March 20th, 2019. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? And these, okay. So there's a motion, thank you, gentlemen. So we have a motion on the floor so that we can discuss. So several weeks ago, this board adjourned into an executive session. We not only held sort of a mini-board development session, but also discussed goals. This, every individual board member was interviewed by Marty Jenkins, who's the representative from the group that conducted this, or helped us facilitate this goal-setting session. From that, we had the goals bubble up that we have in front of us this evening. But I know I've heard from some commissioners who have said that perhaps these are not completely reflective of some of the initiatives that we've already, we have already undertaken, some things around stormwater, and felt like maybe we need to be more specific. So I think the perfect place to have those conversations is in public, in a very transparent way. So we have a motion on the floor around this resolution. So comments, commissioners?
So I was confused by your statement there. Are you saying that this is going to be amended, tabled and amended with additional goals and priorities? Or are you saying that we are going to vote on this particular element?
That's what the discussion will be. So if there are commissioners who I know are concerned that perhaps maybe these do need to be amended, maybe to be more reflective of some of the initiatives that we already have going on, and that's what the discussion is for, correct? And approve it as it is?
Well, I certainly would agree with tabling this and taking additional time with this. My view is that the goal-setting session that we completed really should have been done in public, that the public should have a chance to inform this board as to their views on priorities and goals. And that doing that in private and coming forward with these four is not, in fact, reflective of the priorities for the board, at least not my priorities. And so certainly these weren't the ones that came through for me as the top, as the top priorities for this board going forward. In addition, the public really should weigh in on what they want this board to pursue. And I appreciate the consultant that we had come in and talk about this. But it seems to me that our consultant was a perfect euphemism for government. He came in after many delays, and I know he wasn't, he was, he was ill. So we, our thoughts and prayers go out to him, and hopefully he's better and will be fully recovered. But he came to us with 1990s technology and acetates to go through what I feel was a very tired set of workshop about expanding government and spending more money and raising taxes. So these issues to me need a lot of work, and I would recommend that we have a session with the public on the goals and move forward after being informed by the constituents to the extent that they want on the goals that we should be pursuing.
So today actually is the day that we're having a discussion about these in public, and the members of the public are here. And this is a, this was published on the agenda, and anybody who wanted to comment about it is more than welcome to do so, obviously. We're also televised. We're going to be on YouTube. Anybody who wants to participate either remotely or in person is free to do so. To that end, I'd actually propose two different amendments to what we have here. The first is for item number one, where it says funding mechanisms for long-term capital program. I'd like to amend that just slightly to emphasize the fact that it's not just all the capital projects for the township. It's infrastructure projects in particular that matter to a lot of us. So I would change that to funding mechanisms for long-term capital and infrastructure projects. And I would, I don't think we need to articulate this specifically in this document, but I would say that to me, the ones that really matter obviously are going to be stormwater and sewer, because I think that we're going to be plowing a lot of money and time and effort into those two particular projects across a lot of the wards in the township, this year, next year, and probably the next year after that. For number three, we say determine long-term funding plan for three fire companies. And for number four, we say determine emergency preparedness plan for township organization, the community, and our businesses, institutions, and organizations. Particularly in light of what happened at the Wawa last week, I would suggest that we should probably combine those two into one. And instead of saying we're going to determine a long-term funding plan for the three fire companies and have an emergency preparedness plan, I'd suggest that we determine a funding program for all of the township's emergency services and decide what it is that we want to see for both our fire EMS and police. I know that I have received requests that we add officers to our police force. That's something that I'd like to see more information about and make happen as we go forward. I want to make sure that we have a funded fire company and EMS as well. But I don't think that this is a conversation that is just limited to them. We need to talk about all of our emergency services.
So are you making a formal motion to amend?
Yeah, the two motions to amend, I suppose, would be, or one motion to amend, would be changing the funding mechanisms for long-term capital program to funding mechanisms for long-term capital and infrastructure programs and collapsing items three and four into a single item for determine long-term funding mechanisms for the township's emergency services.
Is there a second for the motion?
Commissioner Larkin, a question first. Isn't that long-term capital and infrastructure redundant?
Yeah, it is. I think that it's important to stick in infrastructure because I want to make sure that we don't pass a document that says, here are the goals for the township, and it says absolutely nothing about stormwater or sewer. Capital project is such a large, I mean, we just, we just did a capital issue on the corners in the WBA. And I want that. I think that's incredibly important. But I think that there are a lot of people who are going to send me emails and phone and call me and say, why is it that stormwater appears nowhere here? So while it is entirely aesthetic, I think that it's an important way to acknowledge that we have an obligation on those issues.
Okay. In that case, I'll second.
Is there any discussion to the motion on the floor to amend as presented by Commissioner Larkin?
No, but I do have a comment as a whole. And sorry to back before your plan, but this will speak pretty much to what Jack is saying and the whole resolution as a whole. I do agree with Rich. Marty did a great job, but I viewed, no, I viewed what, no, I viewed what went on that night, that it was an exercise, and it's an outline, and it's a guide. And you can even see on the resolution, it says that it was a training session. So for us to make a resolution and to make kind of like etch this in stone of what these priorities are, you know, and I appreciate the candor that the board exhibited, but to use this as a formalized outline, I am uncomfortable voting for any of it. So it's nothing against what you're saying. I just don't think that we should be voting on this as a resolution. It even says here that it was a training exercise, and we should not be having a training exercise as a, you know, carving it in stone, so to speak, with the resolution.
I agree with that. We didn't know at the time that we were developing a list of priorities that would come to a vote at a meeting. And if that was the case, we should have made that abundantly clear at the, at the training session. It was, it was a workshop. It was an exercise. And really, to distill it this way, and again, to, with all due respect to Commissioner Larkin, I don't believe the public is fully note, given proper notice of our development of goals, and that we should make an extra special effort to, to seek input from, from the public on the goals that we'll have. Also, I would say on these goals, we have funding mechanisms for long-term capital, and they're called taxes and debt, the issuance of debt. We know how to fund these programs, so I, I'm not sure, or, or reduction of spending elsewhere. I'm not sure what the funding mechanisms would be. Also, I disagree with combining a fire company funding plan with an emergency preparedness. First of all, I believe that we do have an emergency preparedness plan for some element. If that's not the case, then I'd be surprised. But the funding plan for the three fire companies has specifically to do with a lack of volunteers we've been formed for our fire companies and their request that we consider hiring full-time firemen. That is a completely separate issue from emergency preparedness plans. And the fire companies are funded today. They are funded almost to everything that the fire company and Radnor requested, with the exception of $100,000, which they requested an additional $200,000, it's 250, and we only put, authorized 150, I think, or it was 250, and we authorized 100, something like that. So there was some shortage, but, but that was a specific item. So again, I don't see the need to combine these. I think these need a lot of work, and, and they're really not ready for a vote at this point.
Well, in deference to both Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Farhi, I will remind you that on Monday, March 11th, on the agenda, it said adjournment into executive session for goal-setting session. And it was always pitched to this board as a goal-setting session. And the information that was sent to us, that I forwarded to this entire board on March 20th from Mr. Jenkins, said that the results of the voting, so this was a democratic process. We had a, he had interviews with individual commissioners. We identified different priorities that rose to the top from every commissioner. We talked through those priorities. And through a democratic process, these, this is what came up, bubbled up to the surface. So I would have to vehemently disagree with your assessment of the process. And, you know, I think it's important that we have some sort of goals. When I sat on the school board, we had goals. It's difficult for a township to function. Now, are these the things that we will always do all day, every day? No, they won't be. But at least they are some priorities that we can help, that we can understand, and we can drive towards coming to resolution. The thing that I have found since I was sat, was sworn on into this board, is there are many, many things that are left undone, many things that are just floating out there in the air, that the, the staff has no idea what direction to take those. And it just becomes a whim of, let's throw it on an agenda and see what happens. So I don't think that's any way to do, to govern this township. I don't think that's any way to address the long-term problems that we have. And I think that, I agree with you, Rich, that, you know, the public needs to participate in this. And if we have some goals, people can come out and participate. I, we threw, put this on an agenda. We're voting on this. People can come out and participate. I'm not exactly sure how more transparent we can be. We could certainly have a forum, and everyone can come and talk about their goals, and then we would probably be right back here. I don't know exactly what other, I mean, do you have a suggestion? I said this could be amended.
Well, I do, actually. I would suggest that we-
Well, can we wait? Can we first wait? We need to deal with, I believe, the amendment that's on the floor currently from Commissioner Larkin. But I think it's important that this board set goals. And in sometimes in governance, you have to, you have to take the lead. And certainly the community is more than welcome to come and participate and say, we don't like this, or we need to go in another direction. But I can't imagine that anyone is going to vehemently object to these goals that seem very broad, but seem to have, provide us some direction.
John, does this, did that goal-setting session violate sunshine? Because we're kind of, oh, no. I mean, I know that it was done through a process, but was that, is that a sunshine?
No.
Issue? No?
No.
Because it's not an issue of labor or anything else, but we're now dictating how we want to move forward.
You're allowed, you're allowed to go to, this is a, I viewed it as a training session. Somebody was leading this. You're allowed to meet together to do those types of things.
Okay. But again, it's a training session, and I just, I'm-
Sean, it was a goal-setting session.
But it says training session on the document. John Rice even says it's a training session.
I would just suggest we have a discussion item and invite the public and say, these are the priorities. That's what we should just-
What is this right now?
Well, this was a resolution. This is a vote on a resolution. That's different than a discussion inviting public input on proposed goals.
And isn't that what this is right now?
No, this is a resolution. This is, this is a complete set of goals that for vote. And that's based on a training session that the public had no input or knowledge of. That's, that's what the objection is.
Well, it's not complete yet, because I've got a motion to amend that's pending. And I imagine it's at least possible that members of the public might have their own suggestions that we might come back to, so.
Are you opposed to getting public input on our goals?
We're going to-
I'm opposed to delay, and that seems to be something that you're very fond of. Now, we have a public meeting today. This is our opportunity to talk about this in public. You had just said that you don't want to do this behind closed doors, and now you don't want to do it in public, instead of what you would like to do is delay.
Again, I would propose we have a specific discussion item and invite the public to provide input on goals, and we have proposals for certain goals. That's what we should, that's what I'm suggesting.
We did that.
This is not, no, we haven't, we never informed the public of goals.
What we did was, we put that on our agenda for today, and we invited the public to today's meeting, as we do to every meeting. You're unhappy that you haven't been able to marshal members of the public for the specific goals that you want.
I'm completely happy. That's got nothing to do with my happiness.
Well, then, I think that we're ready to go today.
Well, then, so if there's no more, any more, is there any specific Commissioner comment to the motion on the floor? Or the amended, to amend the motion? All right, then I will ask for staff comment. Is there any staff comment to the amended motion, the motion to amend on the floor?
Madam President, if I may. Goal-setting is typically the governing body actually taking all that they hear from their constituents here during budget process, during all the different topics that had come from in front of this board, to actually set goals and priorities in which the board then can say, here are the priorities, and the community knows that when these are discussed, when they could come and participate in this. As most of you know, every day is goal-setting that you hear from people. So in my experience is, this is what the board's responsibilities are. To only spend less than an hour and a half to set goals for the township was tight. Also too, the dialogue and conversation was quite interesting within there, and then how it wrapped up too, as well. I think technology is irrelevant of how that's handled. So this is some- So, this is something that I think is good. It gives direction for staff. And then it's a good measuring stick to measure staff's performance as well as the board's performance when you establish goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zankowski. Any other staff comment? Public comment, please.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. Several years ago, and I don't exactly remember when, John Fisher was still a commissioner. Jim Higgins was a commissioner. Elaine was a commissioner. You had this event. It was open to the public. There were three of us there. We didn't say a word. We listened. I fully intended to come to your event that night and asked and was told, "No, it was to be private." So, I don't even know what the four goals are that you developed. And I don't know where it's not in any of this information on tonight. So, that's the first step, is that we should know what you all decided were the four goals. And quite honestly, I was given an explanation as to why it was to be executive session rather than open to the public. But it was a pretty poor excuse. And I think that you, I think it was wrong to make it executive and to not have any of the public there because you guys work for us. And it's so, I don't know what you're going to do about it. But as an interested person who now for 21 years has come to just about every meeting you've had, I'm deeply disappointed that we, the public, have no idea what you talked about that night or what conclusions you drew. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other public comment? So, I will say that the resolution is on page 59 of the revised meeting packet, or the meeting packet that was published this evening. So, it is, it is in the packet and it is on page 59.
Can I have one more? Oh, sorry. Just want to, just touching on what Sarah said. If I knew a little bit more about this process going into it, and I didn't get a chance to speak to Marty over the phone, I mean, I could have put that out there to residents such as Sarah and maybe done either social media or newsletter and say, "Hey, what are the goals? What are we doing right? What are we doing wrong?" And I feel that I personally missed something as a commissioner trying to represent my constituents, where I could have at least asked, you know, I mean, I live in, you know, who I hear from, I, maybe, you know, 10 or 15 of the regular constituents. But when you put that out to a newsletter of, you know, 500, 600 people are on social media, you'll hear a little bit more. And it may drum up some interest and some talk. So, I will have to agree with-
So, you didn't put it out prior to this meeting?
Correct. I did not.
Oh, because I did. Oh, you did?
No, no, I did not. So, I didn't know the process. And I wasn't familiar with the process. So-
You didn't read the agenda that said we were going to vote on a resolution that had the goals in it?
No. No, no, no. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about Marty's process. So, I could have added, I could have added what some of the neighbors and what some of the residents wanted as well, instead of just what I want and, you know, the very narrow view that I see. I mean, so, again, I think that this definitely should be done in an open forum. If the League of Women Voters wanted to have something run in conjunction or run parallel with this, and then, you know, maybe it would be closed, but it could be a closed session, but it should be at least videotaped for people to see, so.
Madam President, if I may.
Just one, if I may respond. With all due respect, this is not the job of the League of Women Voters to set the goals for the governing body of this township.
I never said that. I said-
I don't think that the League, and as much respect as I have for the League, it's not the League's responsibility to hold that kind of forum. So, it's not the League's responsibility.
They do hold forums, and I think that gathering input from residents that may not want to speak up or just hearing a different side can't, can't, having, having more information will make us, allow us to make better decisions for the public.
You and Commissioner Booker, who-
I disagree with using the League of Women Voters. I just want to have it as a-
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm just using them as an example, but to have a, but to have a forum, but to have a forum, and typically, they've spearheaded-
I agree with the concept of a forum, that we invite the public to provide-
So, you, you gentlemen, especially you, Commissioner Booker, would like another meeting. You complain about the finance meetings. We shouldn't be having those meetings.
Well, no, what I said is, we should have it at this, a regular meeting. I would have it as a discussion item at a regular meeting, inviting the public. And you could also have a facilitator as well, but that's what my suggestion, at a regular meeting, not an additional meeting. A forum.
You know what? Let's just vote. Let's just vote. Let's just vote.
I think Commissioner Clark had something he wanted to say.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
What do you want to hear? Come on, look. Come on, just tell us.
And we're, we're arguing over something that doesn't really bind us to anything, by the way. So, these are goals. I could vote on the budget and I could vote for allowing infinite traffic in the township if I wanted to. What's going to happen? Nothing. So, you know, we're kind of spinning wheels here over nothing. So, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't care which way this goes. Sarah got my newsletter. I thought this was in public. It wasn't. Fine. I get what she's saying. At the same time, it's not an ordinance. It's a resolution for goals that we may or may not follow. My sense is, when budget time comes around, we're never, my sense is after tonight, we're never going to see this again. No one's going to look at this resolution ever again. So, I think we're wasting everybody's time by arguing over this.
So, then why vote for it if no one's-
I don't know what I'm going to do.
So, when we, so we have, so, gentlemen, we have a responsibility to our township manager, a township manager that we are supposed to evaluate. We are supposed to have goals, things that are achievable and attainable. The other thing I think we need to mention is that the township also had input into these as well, if you will recall from our meeting. So, you could be right, Commissioner Clark, we could be wasting people's time. But, you know, there is a part of me that feels like, you know, we, you know, to evaluate our township manager, to provide information, we've got, you know, a goal, we've got some goals. I don't know. But I guess we do have amended amendment on the floor, so-
Yeah, let's move this.
We can go ahead and vote on that amendment. Commissioner Abel, did you have something you wanted to? All right. So, all those in favor of amending Resolution 2019-22 per Commissioner Larkin's suggestion to, number one, being funding mechanisms for long-term capital and infrastructure, as well as combining items three and four, and determine a long-term funding program for all township emergency services, fire, EMS, and police. Is that right? Sort of like that. Please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry. No. Okay. Then I guess motion fails, four to two. So, then we have the original resolution here on the floor. Is there anything that anyone else would like to say about the original resolution?
Madam President, if I may. I guess it's frustration from staff-wise. We're going to continue to have more discussion and we're going to look at it. We may have a study done, but we don't make decisions. And is what Commissioner Clark spoke about, this is a guideline to follow. There are no decisions that says you're going to fund all of these things. They're all discussions. But as part of the process, you have the information the community doesn't. As part of this, you talk about an open process. I don't think it's fair to the employees of this township, if you're going to have a discussion, when you have funding concerns for many of your items, to say, "Let's have this in public and talk about people's jobs, elimination of potential services," because I guarantee you, that conversation will not be had in the public. You will not talk about eliminating a service, streamlining a service, modifying a service. That's reality. It won't happen. So, I believe that part of that, there's a lot of other organizations that take retreats, that go other places to get away so that they can focus on the tasks at hand. Again, my suggestion would be, is if there's no appetite to approve this, just defeat it and we will not have goals for this year. We have all the special meetings set in which those will be the topics, which we will follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zankowski, any other commissioner comment?
Again, I think that that's just an extreme, what Bob is saying. We don't need, this is something that is just providing an additional opportunity for public input. Ms. Pilling very eloquently spoke of the issues. There's no reason to exclude the public from assisting with setting goals. And we can do it as a discussion item. And if nobody comes forward and there's no issues, then, then that's fine. But we should make it, take some steps to make it available to the public to talk about. We talked about 20 different goals and we prioritized them and rated and ranked them, and then they were distilled into a formulaic type of a format where these four came up. Let's get the public to understand what the goals are that we're considering, 20 or 30 or whatever it is, get their input, and talk about distilling them down to priorities where we get at least the input so the public can feel that they have contributed to what our goals are. These are, and we also have to set up, this is a goal-setting for the Board of Commissioners, as I understood it, not goal-setting for staff. This looked like goal-setting for the Board of Commissioners. So, I think if we want to have set staff goals or Bob Z goals, that might be a different conversation than this. If it's not, then we need to make that clear as well.
Let me just say one more thing. This should not be a resolution. This should be, this is just something that we all talked about on top of the transparency issue. But it's something that we all talked about. We all had our takeaways. It should, it should not be formalized. And we, you know, we all have our own wards. We all have our own agendas. Our residents have different wants and needs, and I don't think that we should lump this in together because each commissioner represents a different constituency, so.
Are you suggesting that you did not adequately represent your constituency in this?
No, no. I did represent, but, but not, but, you know, what, what the other commissioners put down there is not necessarily things that, you know, I can, I could agree with.
Madam President, if I may. I would just ask that this be voted down and we spend the time picking stormwater projects. Those things that have direct impact on the residents, because I think that would be the best use of the board's time. Thank you.
All right. So, is there any additional commissioner comment to Resolution 2019-22? Is there any staff, additional staff comment? Is there any additional public comment? Okay. Then I will call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-22, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
So, okay. Motion fails. Well, then, I guess we will have to have a public meeting where, would you suggest that we put forth all of the things that came out of our goal-setting session? I think we will need to. So, that is what we will do. And we will plan that. I don't know if we'll have time for the next meeting. Mr. Zankowski says no.
Again, my recommendation as a board is, let's put stormwater projects and pick those, sanitary sewer projects, those that impact, have direct impact to our residents.
Well, I'm not going to lie and say that I'm not disappointed that we can't come to consensus on a couple of goals for this township. It is, it is appalling how many things are undone, that are undirected. And I think that it is our responsibility to do that, but perhaps, perhaps we will try again at another time. Move on to discussion of emergency communications. Mr. Zankowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I thought it was important tonight that we would bring up an issue that our superintendent of police is working with Delaware County on improving the communications, radio communications within Delaware County. Chris brought back information from the meeting, which I thought was important for this board to know about what's taking place at the county level and how that can have a direct impact here to Radnor Township. So, the board would so allow and ask Chris if he could speak on that.
Absolutely. Superintendent Plan again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Zankowski and board. Delaware County has put out an RFP and received four responses to complete a very thorough and significant study of radio communications. Currently, it would, we would reorganize our radio bands, take an assessment of existing tower sites, non-tower sites, and what all the needs of the communities are, including funding very specifically. We've reviewed several of these. There's some secondary questions. It's the third meeting on attempting to get the group chosen to move forward with the study. The study will cover all of the 49 municipalities in Delaware County, which is over 191 square miles. And this radio system will touch police, fire, and EMS, possibly public works, with over 563,000 residents, and that doesn't include our visitors. So, this is a major issue. For the township, we'll be able to use some of this information to help direct future projects, because the entire county is getting studied and every municipality. We spoke to Mr. Zankowski and Mr. White about starting to consider putting away money because this is an expensive system and there could be responsibilities to the respective townships for police, fire, and EMS to purchase proper radios. All of the existing equipment will not work with the new type of, what they call a trunked system with, using a P25-capable radio. And we just wanted to make sure that the Board of Commissioners and the community is aware. One of the concerns is, the equipment that we have on the county side, if you will, is aging. And because of these new systems that are going across the country, so NYPD, California have been on these trunk-style radio systems for many years. We're at the back end of it because of the county is in charge of that. But our equipment is under question, so we're keeping a very watchful eye on that. The equipment that is purchased here, I know Radnor Fire and other people, we have the appropriate field equipment for the current system, but that will change as well. And I will keep the manager and the board apprised as we continue forward. The committee has EMS, fire, and police on it, and county representatives. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that.
And if I can just add on to Chris's statement, which is great, is this will be an all-encompassing-type study. It may be something that Chris and I had spoken about, that once a vendor is awarded the contract, that the board may want to consider some additional coverage areas within the township. I know that that would include schools and other institutions of how that would mix in with it. I won't go through security issues or concerns that are there, but I think it would be something that we could look to dovetail on, to make sure we have all those concerns in emergency situations, that regardless of wherever police, EMS, fire have to go, that they would have that ability to communicate within buildings, on properties, all the way around. So, that may be something that, once that's determined, we may want to look at gaps that may be not, that are not filled, to where we want to make sure while they're doing this study, that there's a comprehensive coverage of what this board would like to see in the way of coverage, which, again, may engage a lot of other organizations and institutions within the township. But I thought it was important to bring that to the board's attention this evening, that this is something that is being worked on. I think at the end of the day, that solution for all that we want to have, this, this may be a big part of that piece of the puzzle.
Does anyone have any questions with regards to what we just heard? Okay. Then I guess you guys will continue to keep us in the loop on this.
Well, I just have one, two questions. Is it really what we want to have, Chris and Bob, is a county-based system that all, what'd you say, 191 square miles? Aren't we leaving ourselves exposed if we rely on the county for our communications for emergencies?
I'm going to say what you and Shaun are right there.
So, it's a two-part answer. So, when we switched and got rid of dispatching, police, fire, and EMS, now all fall under one PSAP, they call it, it's a public safety system that coordinates all the 911 calls. So, for efficiencies of dispatch, toning out fire departments, and obviously dispatching police, we have what we would consider a cutting-edge system. However, Radnor Township and the Radnor Fire Company specifically have secondary channels that are set up, that in a storm, we call it Radnor TAC, they have what they call Radnor Private. We have radio systems that we control, they're in our township, they're hooked to our generators, so that we can continuously provide service should there be interruption in service with Delaware County. So, we do have a backup plan.
Also, as I recall, we had an issue, and we had a directive to explore additional antenna and communication antennas for emergency services for Radnor Township, not cell towers, but an antenna. So what's the status of that, and has this been negated by that, by this county program and study?
The part of the, one of the very important parts of the study, Commissioner, would be to assess the type of trunking system that we get. In other words, the band, 7, 800, 500, all can be trunked, but the spectrum in which those radio waves go across is very important to how many tower sites or radio sites would be needed. So depending on which, where the frequencies are made available by the federal government for the county usage, and the amount of call volume we would put on there, then it would dictate how many towers, how high they have to be. In-building penetration is supposed to be a 90 to a 95% standard on portable coverage, meaning the portable on a firefighter's hip or a police officer's hip should be able to hit out 90% of the time in-building coverage. So all those standards will apply to exactly what type of technology. They probably will see more radio sites with this newer type of technology.
So I think even just to add on to Chris, maybe to your point, we will see more of these that will be required under this new radio system. So instead of maybe putting one up, an antenna somewhere, it may be within 2021, you may have three that will have to cover that particular area.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, the study is also important because it's going to tell us where the best location for these sites are. So, I mean, when, you know, we're talking about specific areas, I mean, we, the study may come back and say the location is actually not in Radnor Township, it's in a neighboring township. So that's why it's important that we need to get the study back before we can really see what the impact is to Radnor Township.
That is correct, and it'll come with maps and everything, and that's why Mr. Zankowski has us assigned, so we'll be able to get that back. The one thing I forgot, the county at the minimum is looking at a 20 to a $30 million project. That's not including service user radios and other things that may need to go on. So it is a significant issue for the county of Delaware as well.
And as we mentioned, this is something the board should start considering putting money away for, because I'm sure that, and maybe through their benevolence, that the county will pay for all this, but I highly doubt that they will pay for some of those pieces of equipment on the local level, if it's needed.
So they may provide a report that says to us, you need to put an antenna or something somewhere within the township, and then we would have no choice but to comply, or would we be able to say yes or no, or, I'm not exactly?
My guess is that would be something that, if it said it needed to be planted in the middle of the neighborhood, I highly doubt we're going to plant one of those in the neighborhood, but then it could be adjusted to where, as Commissioner Abel spoke about, it may be in another community, which can go higher in a less-impact area. So that's all part of that study, to give all these options to be looked at.
County has, township has zoning regulations that deal with any kind of telecommunications facility, whether it's in the right-of-way or outside of the, it breaks them up into in the right-of-way and outside of the right-of-way. Some require a special exception, go to the zoning hearing board. Some are permitted by right. So whether it's the county or some other organization that wants to put up some type of a telecommunications facility, there's going to be some zoning involved with it and permitting involved with it from the township.
And public safety concerns don't supersede that, or?
That's an element that whoever wants to put the tower up, I guess, can make in an argument, but no. I mean, it's, townships and boroughs regulate telecommunications facilities. The feds are taking away a lot of that ability recently, but there's still an element of zoning involved with towers or any type of a pole, and the township has some regulations that are in the books. I think we might be starting to look at updating those, because the feds have passed some relatively recent regulations that deal with that, but still a zoning issue.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on, solicitor review of the CICD. Mr. Rice.
You know, Bob had talked about, and I know there were some questions, what the CICD zoning use was. Many of you were not on the board, I guess, when this was adopted in 2014. The CICD is an acronym for Comprehensive Integrated College Development, and what the township enacted back in 2014 was a particular use, the CICD use, which was permitted in the planned institutional district. So you have an existing planned institutional district that had some general uses. This was an effort to create a new use that was comprehensive, that any of the colleges could utilize, quite frankly. It wasn't just limited to Villanova, but it was available and is available under the zoning ordinance for the other colleges in the township. The process with this, the initial step was an amendment, zoning amendment to the zoning ordinance to create the use, which went through the normal process under the MPC. The legislation permits the use by conditional use, which is sort of like a special exception, except it comes to the Board of Commissioners and not to the zoning hearing board. So there was a, there were hearings on conditional use approval for the CICD use, and then there was land development plans. So there were three sort of separate and distinct processes here, where this went through a fairly lengthy vetting process with the Planning Commission, with the Delaware County Planning Commission. I went back and looked, there's at least four county review letters, either on the zoning amendment or on the land development plans as it was going through Radnor at the time. So what this does, and I can put everybody to sleep and give you all the details of this, because it was a substantial piece of legislation, which was about 12 pages, but it establishes CICD use in the planned institutional zoning district. There's an acreage limitation for it. It's got to be a site area greater than 10 acres, but no more than 15 acres. It also has to be a contiguous parcel or lot, and there's only one CICD allowed on any particular institutional's campus. So there were some locational restrictions in the ordinance as part of even being eligible to have this use. And then the use itself gives you the subordinate uses, such as the educational, academic facilities, the performance facilities, which we know Villanova has done, social facilities, housing facilities, and retail uses were permitted as specific subordinate uses as part of the CICD. So the retail subordinate uses that are listed are bookstores, clothing shops, bakeries, personal service shops, café bistro, banks, indoor amusement arcade, and there were some requirements for those subordinate uses. It had to be located on the ground floor of the basement of a building. So the ordinance has very detailed dimensional requirements in terms of parking, in terms of setbacks. There are maximum building areas and total building coverage percentages specific to the CICD. There's some height limitations. There's a requirement to preserve land. Some of you may recall the Aldwin Triangle was something that eventually got preserved, and there's a conservation easement on that that has been executed and recorded against that, so that won't be developed. So once this was adopted, as I said, the board then had hearings, enacted, passed a conditional use application and approved that, and then went through preliminary and final land development plans. And they've been building in phases, as anyone that's driven down Lancaster Avenue or lives close by realizes. So that's sort of a general overview of it. It is a specific use in your zoning ordinance still that could be available to some of the other educational institutions in the township. Villanova gets one, everybody else gets one, according to the ordinance as it was set up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rice, for that. So I'm going to assume there's a specific purpose why this was on the amendment, or the agenda other than to educate, but certainly that was very helpful. I appreciate that. Commissioner Farhi.
Thank you, Madam President. John, can you just talk to us about how this relates to the new restaurant when it comes to parking? Does Villanova have enough parking spots for the new students, the new restaurant, faculty, staff? You know, I know that initially the bistro was supposed to be 85 seats, then it went, jumped from 200 plus an 18-seat bar, now I believe it's down to 181?
That's...
So, I know it's been fluctuating up and down. Can you, you know, kind of give us what you've spoken, or what, you know, what you've spoken to Villanova, and then how it relates to, you know, parking? Do they have enough parking, especially when it comes to multipurpose events such as basketball with the restaurant, football, and now the Performing Arts Center? Thanks.
The bistro has been analyzed by Kevin Kachansky, who's your zoning officer, and what he's told me is the initial number of seats was way over what they would be permitted with the available parking. So, so the number is, you said, Sean, 180?
No, it went from 85 seats when it was a bistro, and then when they had the new arrangement, it went from 200 seats with an 18-seat bar, and now it's back down from what I believe I saw, 181.
Because that's the limits of their parking.
So now that you've limited back down to 181, how many available parking spots does Villanova have left if they want to have a new project? What is their available parking?
I think they're pretty much tapped out.
So they have zero parking spots, is that correct?
I'm not your zoning officer, and you know that Kevin has done a pretty in-depth analysis.
Correct.
Which, did he send that to you?
He sent me something. I know that I did ask if we could put something up on the overhead. I know that Kevin did some math. Do we have that, or no?
I mean, I don't, I don't have it, but he, he has been back and forth with representatives of Villanova in terms of their overall parking, because they've had a pool of parking available that they've utilized as they've gone through this project. The bistro sort of focused him on looking at what was left. Some of their projects, and if you go back, if you go back 20 or 30, 40 years, was approved by the zoning hearing board with no parking. So you have that, that you have to sort of bring into the mix, but right now, as of the last time I spoke to him about this, about two weeks ago, I think there, in terms of new projects, I don't think there's any parking available.
Okay. Bob, can you get a decision from Kevin Kachansky about that? The last thing that I want, and I know my Old Oaks neighbors want, is parking on the streets, and I know that you do block some of that off for game day, but if you keep going further east, maybe on, so it stops on maybe, so Hawthorne may be blocked off, Barleycomb, but I know if you go to Lowry's, sometimes you can, you know, that's not blocked off when you can come for parking. So, pardon, and Garrett?
Garrett.
Okay, or Garrett as well. So that's the biggest concern, because...
Sean, and one, just, I mean, one thing, just, see, some of the residents that participated in the hearings are here. Because of the history of some of the things that were approved over time by the zoning hearing board, in some cases without parking, and then you have changed zoning regulations, which say for certain types of uses, depending on whether you're doing it by seats in a restaurant, or number of employees, or square footage, you get this conglomerate parking requirement, and I think Kevin has a pretty good handle on it as a result of looking at this closer with the CICD and the existing development that's on the campus in terms of parking overall.
So, and that brings me to my next point. So I know that Rich is trying to do something in his ward when it comes to medical parking, of what you're allowed to do. Would it be beneficial if we look, and it's not a Villanova-centric issue, but it would also be for all institutions of, and it probably would apply more to Villanova, because they do things that may be considered outside the scope of a charity or an educational facility, when you come to, you know, larger restaurants and stuff like that? Where you're looking at, I believe it's what, for every three seats, you need one parking spot, or when it comes to what your staff is, or how many employees, and then you'd have to factor in students and professors and faculty. Would that be something that would be beneficial to look on, not only on a medical, you know, for the medical facilities that we have, but also for the institutional facilities, especially the educational and charity, charitable facilities?
It would be helpful to... It would be helpful to look at a lot of your parking requirements, because, and the Planning Commission has looked at it. As Rich knows, there was a discussion two years ago about certain parking issues which didn't go anywhere, and that it's come back. And I think, Rich, you saw the letter, it was sent to the County Planning Commission for their review, the medical office parking upgrade. That was something that the Planning Commission wanted to do two years ago. There was also a discussion about shared parking. When you have a town center, you have restaurants that are opening up, they have no onsite parking, so, and that was brought up, but this board said, we don't want any shared parking. Maybe it's appropriate in the WBOD and not on Radnor Chester Road, because it was discussed as part of Radnor Chester Road, having shared parking where restaurants are open certain hours, they have these, and then there's other uses that are open other hours, so there would be a shared requirement. So I, I mean, all of that makes sense to me, because your zoning is relatively dated, and you've got a lot of redevelopment now, and you probably will have more in the future. And if you can't meet the parking requirements, you don't want everybody going to the zoning hearing board. There's got to be some other alternatives to that.
Sure. Just a couple more questions. Yeah, if they go to zoning hearing, then it becomes a hardship, and then it ends up in media or beyond. So when you looked at that, and when Kevin looked at the amount of parking that's left, you're saying it's zero, and again, I'll just ask Bob if you can send an email to me to confirm that it is zero. That includes the construction vehicles that are parked in Pike Field, and then what happens if they keep that as a temporary lot? Or is that something more, well, they say they're not allowed to, but once that's paved over, I believe they're, they have to turn it back? Is that...
I believe in Pike Field, there was an agreement with the township that they will return it back to the field.
They will return that.
Their intention is to use it as a field again.
Okay. I just want to double-check and get that on the record, that that's what they're going to do. So, then again, so any new construction, Villanova's going to need more parking, and then the question is, is where are they going to get it? And, you know, I don't want to speak for all of the 7th Ward residents, but I'll speak for some of them. My guess is they don't want another five-story garage that backs up with all the lights and the noise associated with that. So I think that's something that the board can look going forward of how to avoid not only more construction, but I think a garage is extremely unsightly as well. So that's what I have.
If the board is interested in looking at that issue, not just in this, in the PI, but across the board, which it probably should, because I don't think it's been looked at. There's been bits and pieces here and there. You may, you're at least getting a, I think, a proposal from Comida, Tom Comida. He's a pretty well-known planner, and there's other planners that do parking studies and make recommendations regarding zoning, because if you leave it up to, you know, I'm not going to do a parking study. I can draft the ordinance when someone tells me what we're going to do in terms of the regulations, but, and Kevin will do part of a parking... but, and Kevin will do part of a parking study, but if you want a sort of global looking at where you're gonna need parking, what the existing conditions are, that's, I would recommend you look at somebody like that to get a proposal. It's a professional service, you can put it out for an RFP and then deal with it, because there's a lot of parking issues in a developed community. I mean, this is, you don't have farmland anymore. You have some parks, most of that's preserved, but it's your, you know, your town area and Radnor Chester Road area where someone should really take a hard look at it.
And I think that's a great idea, but again, my concern is, you know, I think they've almost run out of, I don't, maybe I should bite my tongue or knock on wood, but maybe they've run out of developable land, and if they haven't, again, there's gonna be massive, there's massive traffic to begin with, but then that would, you know, make even a greater parking issue, but I think that is a...
And there's redevelopment, Sean, there's redevelopment. They may have buildings on, you know, that, they're willing to build those to build something else. I mean, you get, you need to think about that.
Well, I, I, I mean, I've thought about that, but they have a dome issue that they wanna, that they could knock something down to put the dome, so it's outside of the neighborhoods, and they've opted not to do that. So I think that them trying to redevelop would be, would be not necessarily, I'm not saying that they won, I just don't necessarily know if that's what they would seek to try to do.
So I think we could sit here and speculate all night long on what Villanova is or isn't gonna do, or what development's gonna happen, but I think that Mr. Rice makes an interesting suggestion that we perhaps should have someone take a look at parking overall. We do have the medical piece that was in front of the planning commission, and what now it's going to the Delaware County Planning, is that, okay. So we have that. Is it possible, I mean, Bob, do you want, should we bring forward on our next agenda a resolution or direction so that we can go out and look? I mean, is there will on the board that we do some sort of parking overall township-wide, or at least the two areas, the WBOD and Radnor Chester Road? Look at those areas? I don't know.
The board can just give a consensus, and we could go out and get those proposals. However, it's gonna be bigger than just those areas, because it's some of these with the institutions, you're gonna impact the school district in some of those areas, because they have spillover parking that moves over into other areas too, so, when they have events. So I think you've gotta approach this township-wide of how, what, you know, you want this to look like and involve all the various stakeholders as part of this, to bring this to light and get a lot of, again, input of what you're, what you'd actually be looking for.
I just had one thing, and then one here from Sarah Pilling, but I just wanna reiterate what we heard, that there would be a one-hundred-and-eighty-one-seat bar and restaurant for Villanova within this, is it, what did we, what did we hear?
It was two-eighteen.
It was two-eighteen.
Now I believe it's down to one-eighty-one.
Now it's down to one-eighty-one.
But I don't know what the breakdown is from restaurant to bar.
I, I happened to look at some of my older materials this past week, and I, when we had adopted the CICD, and it's, the description of it said that the main uses for the CICD would be in furtherance of the charitable purpose, with the exception being the bookshop, the bookstore. And I know that in the CICD, there was a provision for a cafe or a bistro, but did it really contemplate a one-hundred-and-eighty-one, one-hundred-and-eighty-one-seat?
Well, initially it was two-hundred-and-eighteen-seat, now it's one-eighty-one.
Right. Two-hundred-and-eighty, one-eighty-one, but that, that, I think that a lot of people would be surprised if they see, think of that larger restaurant and bar that would be on campus for the public's use, and wouldn't expect that that would be at Villanova. Is that, is that in keeping with the spirit of the CICD, which allowed for a cafe or a bistro?
You know that the restaurant was also done with, in partnership with a for-profit entity. Are you aware of that?
No, I'm not familiar with the exact nature of the operation of the restaurant, but I just want to verify that that, I don't think that that was contemplated when we passed the CICD, and I don't, and I know that I, the materials that I looked at from three or four, four years ago talked about the main purpose, the uses being in furtherance of the charitable purpose, with the exception of the bookstore, so...
This is the ordinance I can...
So, so a hundred, so Kevin looked at it, a one-hundred-and-eighty-one seat is what he said that they could get with the parking?
Yeah. Correct. Correct. That's the limit in terms of the avail, the available parking that's left. That's the limit on the numbers.
Do they, do they need a bar that big for, what's it?
I don't, I can't answer that.
Sarah Pilling again. I've been to two meetings at Villanova where parking was discussed. The first was a town hall for sustainability, and they're looking at currently the cost per month to park in one of their parking garages is about twenty dollars less than a transpass. So Villanova is in discussion with SEPTA to change their parking requirement. That's that garage that we made them put several levels on, and the law school garage, that they would make the fee to park in that garage higher than the cost of a transpass in order to encourage people to take the train, because they know they are insufficient. Last week, I went to the Villanova neighbors' meeting, and there will be five-hundred students still living at what used to be called the Broad Lawn. The baby lawn became home properties and is now called the Villas at Bryn Mawr. And again, Villanova is talking to SEPTA so that those five-hundred kids with who knows how many cars will take the Norristown high-speed trolley to campus. So I know they know they don't have enough parking, but they're looking to SEPTA as a way to keep these cars off campus. So that's just more information to throw in the mix. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jane Galley, Seventh Ward as well. I have been in this process since 2014, when it began, almost, and bistro to me says something small and intimate, obviously, one-hundred-and-eighty-one is what they consider small and intimate. The biggest problem I see is, when you have a basketball game, and you have the theater that's gonna be open, and you have a restaurant that's gonna be open, and you have eleven-hundred-and-thirty-five new, a hundred new students, I'm sorry, I don't care by whose estimation, there's no place for everybody to be, and we're gonna have a parking problem like you have never seen. And it's, it's really awful that we get sold one bill of goods, and then it somehow turns into something else. And that's sort of the pattern that we've had to live with in the Seventh Ward since I lived, well, not quite since I've lived here, because that was almost forty years. But Villanova was a small college at the time, it was, I don't even think it was a university when I moved in. But, you know, and I understand it has grown, blah, 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 and they won basketball games, but you know what? Enough is enough, and if you wanna know where they can build, there's three old houses down Lancaster Avenue, which they made into one huge parcel instead of three separate ones, so there's a big chunk of property that they could do something with if they wanted to. Just to let, keep it in mind.
Thank you.
Rick Leonardi, Aldman Lane. The question I have, I guess, goes back to the, the purpose of the CICD was in fact to write, to grant permission to Villanova to build what they wanted to build, and to do so by circumventing the zoning hearing board. It was very effective at doing that. And the question I have is that throughout the CICD process and throughout the conditional use phase, the only language that was ever seen in paper or orally at this day was bistro. It was only with enormous reluctance that Villanova eventually allowed the use of the word pub. Now we're talking about a bistro, and in addition to this bistro, a two-hundred or a one-hundred-and-eighty-one-seat full-service restaurant. My question is, parking aside, when was permission for this restaurant ever granted? How do you, how do you get permission? How do you get approval to build a restaurant without zoning hearing board and without any mention in the other, the alternative approval process through the CICD? This just, this just came out of thin air. I mean, if I'm, if I'm a restaurateur elsewhere in Radnor Wayne, and I wanna open a place, I'd have to jump through enormous hoops. I have to prove parking, and I have to do all kinds of approval process. Here, these guys are being awarded a two-hundred-seat restaurant, no governmental oversight whatsoever. How is that possible? And apparently, you know, the parking is zeroed out. The parking for it doesn't exist. I mean, at a minimum, I think the board needs to, needs to just draft a memo right now to Villanova and say, "Stop construction on your restaurant, you can't have it. Can't have it until you come up with two-hundred more spots." Thanks.
That makes a great point, because when they have the new students coming in, if they have, if they had too many acceptance and too many children coming in, or students coming in, then you're gonna have that many, you know, if they have to triple up a two-bedroom dorm, then you're gonna have even a greater issue, and I don't know how you account for that. How do you account for, oops, we've thought we were only gonna have twelve-hundred students in this class, but we have fourteen-hundred students? So I don't know, it's a big can of worms that has opened up because of this. I don't know if there's any one solution to fix this.
Just so it's, it's clear, I have the ordinance here, and one of the subordinate uses says cafe, bistro, eatery, or similar establishment owned and/or operated by the applicant. So that's, that's a permitted use under this ordinance.
But...
And there's no limit, there's no limit on the number of seats in here for any of these uses, not just the restaurant use.
Jane, what were, I mean, you're part of the, you're on the CICD board, yeah, so...
I'm on the CICD board, the Care Committee. But the problem is, it's not owned by the applicant. It's got, it's got a partner who is a commercial person. It's a restaurateur that is in partnership. It doesn't say partnership, it says the applicant.
Owned or operated, I'm assuming Villanova owns the restaurant.
Not, not the, not the, your microphone's not on.
No.
The restaurant person coming in is a, is commercial. He's not like Villanova's dining section of the...
It's a group that owns Estia. It's a group that owns Estia, I believe, in...
So you're talking about a commercial business.
So it's a commercial entity. It's a quasi-commercial...
But are you, do we, do you understand what the, I mean, I'm asking the question, does anyone understand what the relationship is? And is that something...
They're in partnership.
Yeah, so, but, but shouldn't that have been before they said, "Hey, we're doing it," shouldn't, and by the way, I've asked for a CICD meeting based on this. I've asked three times, actually, I've sent letters out to you, Jane, to Rick as well, Villanova. Not only has given me the runaround, they've basically said, "No, they will not meet on this issue, and that's why it has to come here."
And the trouble, we were just asking, to kinda wrap it up, as the construction gets finished, we wanted to put out, kind of end the whole committee in a, in a final way.
And, and here's the thing, I'm not opposed to a restaurant, I just think that it needs to be done where the residents know, and it's not done in the middle, in the middle of the night. They need to know what their parking is, come to us beforehand and say, "Hey, this is what we're looking to do."
Right.
What's the input back from Radnor Township as opposed to, and the neighbors, I think that's important, as opposed to just doing something and saying, "Oh, here it is."
Sorry.
Yeah, it's, as you say, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than, than permission.
Permission.
But it would seem that's the way the CICD was constructed. That was the exact...
Well, I'm, okay, so let's, let's...
So they don't have to do all that. I mean, I'm not saying that they shouldn't, but I'm saying that if that's what the ordinance is, what, what do we...
Being a good neighbor, right?
I don't know. So I guess, in...
Tony, you have something to say?
John, what were you gonna say?
No, what Tony's...
Well, they're permitted uses, so you can argue that it's not owned or operated because there's a manager, but I don't know what the, I haven't seen any documentation, because they don't have to show that to the township. There, it's a business, if a restaurant opens in downtown Wayne, that restaurant doesn't come in here and show their management operating papers or their lease to the township. It's a zoning issue, Jane. It's a zoning issue.
But they'd have to, they'd have to show the number of seats that they're, that they're gonna have.
Which they do, which they do, and there's a...
But Villanova decided not to, and then got caught after the fact, correct?
No, well, no, no, no.
It would seem, it would seem that way to me, that it goes from eighty-five to two-eighteen, oh, that's too much, back down to one-eighty-one.
Every restaurant comes in with thirty or forty more seats than they have parking for. Everyone. And Kevin, they submit plans, he calculates them, he calculates the exits and egresses under the fire safety code, and then he tells them, "No, you can't have a hundred, you can only have eight."
And, and, okay, and I don't wanna...
That's what Villanova did.
Sure, sure, and I don't wanna speculate, but I think that the concern of the neighbors is, hey, they're out of parking, you know, that they're out of parking, and then how does this affect Ward Seven, and maybe parts of Ward Two, and parts of Luke's Ward? But, I'm sorry, I'll let Ms. Bailey speak.
So, let Tony speak, and then, I mean, go ahead, Tony.
Good evening, Board. During the conditional use process, I was granted party status. I find it troubling that the CICD is now under review by our solicitor. As you know, the nuts and bolts of the CICD ordinance was created by Villanova, for Villanova, and agreed to by Villanova University. Parking has always been an issue. I heard the word bistro used by council for Villanova at nauseam. Now, all of a sudden, it's a banquet hall, and they need more parking, which they do not have. Most often, Villanova is not a good neighbor or an honest developer who enters into agreements on a good-faith basis. The time is now to send a clear message to Villanova University and any other developer that dishonesty will not be tolerated. I urge the board to authorize the solicitor to fight every step of the way for this. I am very familiar with the campus. I am not only just up there, I am the usher at the ten-thirty mass. There is not enough parking for the parishioners. They have to walk. I've heard this, especially from my elders, that they are told to go to the parking garage. You know where the church is? The church is at least a quarter of a mile from the parking garage. They're consigned, "Oh, go park over there. There's not enough room." I've been to so many events where there isn't enough parking, and there's shuttling. I've heard from students who live at South Campus who have, who are authorized to park there. When they have events, they are told to park up at the law school. They're very disgruntled, that they pay for parking at South Campus, and now for special events, they have to go park, I don't know, a mile away from where they live and go get, retrieve their cars. It's unreasonable to ask them to continually do this. It's unreasonable for Villanova to come in and say, "Okay, now, we wanna go from an eighty-five-seat bistro to a banquet hall?" No. I have this CICD, which is dated March of 2015, where in it, it talks about the, it shows the eighty-five-seat bistro using the remaining square footage of the retail in building two A. There are also twenty employees. Shows the project increase of forty seats of assembly, which is the largest in the theater of the Performing Arts Center. Again, I can't emphasize enough, there isn't enough parking up at Villanova University as we speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you all very much. You know, I don't know, I don't know that there's any action this board can take if they're, you know, if they're within the, you know, the prescribed amount of the CICD and our zoning officer is looking at it, I...
It's a permitted, it's a permitted use, and I heard bistro during the hearings too, you know, but the ordinance doesn't say only a bistro and only fifty seats. It says, what I read, that's what the ordinance actually says. So they can, you know, go up to, the restriction... So they can, you know, go up to, the restriction is always parking. So when they came in with 200 and some seats, Kevin did a pretty deep analysis, not of just that, but everything that had been built new and everything that was old. And he has them at whatever he has them now. Under his calculation, they have enough parking for the 181.
That's what this is about. I'll just be brief. So they have the conditional use to do this, that's fine, but they're out of parking and it's, I just wanted to get it almost on record. And once Kevin sends me the, the data, they're out of parking and that's why the restaurant went from 218 back down to 181. It's just, I think that further acknowledges that point. So going forward, I don't know what's going to happen when it comes to where they're going to park, but I think that we should know now that it definitely sets a precedent that they are out. So whatever their new projects are, we should definitely look at how they're going to have parking because they have zero right now.
Just one thing I would ask for, Bob, if you would direct staff to provide a letter describing the conclusions by the code enforcement officer or zoning officer, that it does comply and how he calculated it so that we could post that, so people could understand how he arrived at that. I, I think it's worth it in this case that this is the township's interpretation and this is how we concluded that they do comply, that it'd be worth it for everybody to have in the neighborhood.
If that's what the board would like, we can, I will have him actually produce that too as well. If I would have known that the restaurant was going to be the item of topic tonight, I would have probably had, you know, Kevin hang around and also have Villanova here to answer it because I think we've put John in an awkward spot of defending Villanova, which he does not want to do.
Why am I defending Villanova?
But, but I think as part of this though, is if you'd like, we can have that. And then if you want to add this to the next agenda, that this is a concern that the township has, then we can have that addressed and then also we can invite Villanova to attend.
I wouldn't, I would just have them do it.
Let me just jump in here. I've asked Villanova to meet for a CICD meeting, so I, it shouldn't have had.
There is no CICD group. There is no meeting.
Or Care, pardon me, Care, Care Committee.
VU, VU Care is for regarding the construction, how that was done. This is, that falls, CICD falls way outside the VU Care.
It does, but I, I didn't want, I didn't want it to have to come to this is what I'm saying. But I think that, that's a good next step though.
But I don't, but I don't think that even falls within the VU Care realm of the CICD. I think it belongs at the board level here for interpretation of the CICD. So, and that's where it sits tonight with the overview of that. So if the board is so like, we will have Kevin prepare that and then have that available at the, the next meeting and then be able to put that information out.
I, I would be for that. I guess Rich, if we have.
I, I think it would be worth it and it would, again, document the township's conclusions that they do comply with the terms of the CICD so that the public and anyone who's interested can verify the township's interpretation. They may take issue with it, but at least they have that to go off of.
Is there consensus in the board to have Mr. Kaczynski prepare such a letter? Does anyone object?
Instead of having it as, as an agenda item?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
I mean, all right. Okay.
We will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zinkowski. All right. Are we good with this item? Okay. Finance and audit, anything? Public safety, I think we discussed that? Library? I'm sorry, did you have something?
Yes, on that item, I would ask the board to consider. I know that at, during the last incident we spoke about earlier this evening, there were several concerns from a resident. I know Commissioner Abel had brought up the point, which I thought was a valid point, that we get woken up at 3:00 in the morning, that the National Weather Service wants to tell us that tomorrow there is going to be a flash flood warning. So please be aware that in another day that we have this. I know that we've considered whether or not the township should eliminate the weather part of that call. Because again, I think sometimes when you get a phone call at 3:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, that, you know, if it's Monday night and all of a sudden at 3:00 in the morning you get that call, it says, well, on Wednesday there's the potential for flash flood warning. And again, when you have incidents that occur and people are looking for information, you don't put it out or you can't put it out. I think it sends kind of different messages. So I would recommend to the board that for your consideration is we pull that element out of the, the notification about the weather part because it's generated by the National Weather Service. The National Weather Service puts that out. We have no control over saying, don't send it out at 3:00 in the morning for something that's going to happen 24 to 36 hours later. So if that's something that the board would consider, we can remove that weather component and still allow for all the other communications to be there. But I think there's some validity to the point that you're letting people know and it seems that we get a lot of those calls about within another day, we may have snow or that. So, but that's where you got to almost live with it. The idea if a tornado's coming, what, do you offweigh that balance of the day and a half in advance?
Can't people already go on? And, I mean, I have gone into the township website and I don't, I turned that off. I don't get it anymore.
That's true. You, you have that option to be able to turn that off.
I mean, what if there are people who want to receive that, but we cease to offer that option?
I just thought we, we'd begin that discussion because I think it is frustrating to get that phone call 3:00 in the morning.
Don't disagree. That's why I turned it off.
Okay.
So can individual participants turn it off or does it need to be turned off by the township?
You can just turn off that, that portion of it, leave the other information, but pull the weather off.
Just log into the website and you turn it off.
Is that something you think we need to broadcast throughout the township to let people know? You have that option to be able to do that.
Bob, I would agree with you to turn, to take it off of our feed so that people don't have to, to take that step. I, I would agree with that and I'd weigh that, you know, recognizing that there might be one that.
Sure.
That you might want, but.
That's something you can think about, get feedback input on of how you want to do it, so.
I guess I'd definitely like to hear from the commissioners who have areas where there is significant flooding in the event of a major.
We would put that out, the township would initiate that. It wouldn't be like we would be waiting on the National Weather Service because there's times they put out flash flood warnings and it didn't rain. And then there are times where we had major rains and flooding and they didn't put a notice out, so.
So a hurricane, a tornado warning at 3:30 in the morning, is it township, could the township put something like that out? Is someone monitoring it? Or is that kind of like, it's 2:30 or 3:00 in the morning, maybe they are, maybe they're not?
More than likely we are, we are not monitoring weather so when that comes out and then go through the process to go ahead and initiate that phone call.
So then the question is, do you want to be annoyed but safer or less annoyed and take a little more risk?
It's, it's good for discussion to be able to have that because I can, I understand those frustrations from people that do get those.
Why doesn't everyone take it back to their wards and see what people say?
My input has been limited, but it has been expressing the frustration with being woken at 4:00 in the morning for something that, it scares people more to get that 4:00 call than it's the benefit. So, but as Ms. Barowski points out, flooding in the neighborhoods is not a big issue for, for my area.
For Rich, have you received it as a text so you don't get the phone call?
You can, you can choose that option.
That's correct.
That's in the, you, you log in and you can choose those options. You can get it as a text, you can turn it off altogether. But again, you know, we can consider it for the, how, if everyone thinks about it, we put it on for discussion at the next meeting. People can weigh in. You could go back and talk to your ward in your newsletter.
Goal setting? Can we have goal setting on this?
Can you go, you could put it in your newsletter and ask your ward what they think and seek input from your constituents and then we can decide from there. Thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Zinkowski. Anything else for public safety? Nothing for library? Anything for public health? Mr. Nagel was feeling unwell, so he's not here to give us public health because he's not healthy. No, he's not feeling well. Any new business?
Yeah, I just have one item. When's, when's the next planning commission meeting?
I guess it'd be the beginning of May.
First Monday usually.
Yeah, they met last Monday.
Is, is that being held the same night as we're having a, a board meeting?
Our planning and, planning is usually the first Monday of the month, right?
Shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be.
I only raise it because Wawa is on the agenda, so I don't know that we want to be having the board meeting.
We can't have board and planning, they meet here, so they wouldn't be at the same night. At the same night?
It goes on a moral basis.
So what, are they going to meet upstairs?
Well, it's because we have a special meeting.
We have a special?
I, I understand the 13th is a special meeting, so my thought would be move it out of the 6th to the 13th. Move it off the 6th to the 13th, so there's no issue with planning. You have a special meeting scheduled for the 13th, which is the second Monday.
So would we have the special meeting on the 6th then?
No. Be clear about that. No. Cancel.
I, I would agree with, if that's a motion by Commissioner Clark, I would second that.
I, I will move to cancel the May 6th. No, I'm sorry. I would vote to move the May 6th Board of Commissioners meeting, regular Board of Commissioners meeting to May 13th and cancel the special Board of Commissioners meeting. Or combine them or, or put whatever we had on the agenda.
Is that, we, we, what is the topic for the 13th?
The Board of Health was looking into moving their meeting from May 20th to May 13th because they have a public speaker and they need this room.
To the 13th? Because we're normally upstairs for the special meeting.
Sanitary door?
That's a big idea.
How would you feel about, how would you feel about canceling the meeting?
Yeah.
We should have a conversation about that at some point. We need to decide whether we're going to fund it or sell it.
We will, how about if we take a look at the schedule and we bring something forward for the April, at our April meeting, April 22nd meeting.
Yeah, we can figure that out then. We'll figure, yeah, we'll, we'll have it on for the.
So we will work on that. Thank you, Commissioner Abel, for pointing that out and we will figure out and come up with a solution and have that on the April 22nd agenda. Any other new business? Old business? You do have some, so I do have something. So Bob, I'm just wondering if you can clarify, so we had some residents, we had several residents here talking about the small cell proposal that's coming from Crown Castle or the work that's coming from them. I've had a number of those residents reach out to me and I'm just wondering if you can clarify for us, I think you have a meeting with them on Wednesday and to understand, because I don't even understand, you know, they were coming to us for us, I guess to in some way become, intervene or become involved and I don't even understand if that's even something we can do.
I think once we get clarification after meeting with Crown Castle, I would put something out to the board as an update and status of where, where they sit at in this.
But that's, but right now basically they're just talking about testing, right?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. So there's no installation, no plan right now?
No, there is not. Not that I'm aware of, but I don't believe there is.
All right. Well, if you could provide that update, I think that would be really helpful.
I will do that.
Thank you very much. Any other old business? Public participation?
I just have one quick question. When you were talking about the cell, the towers going up for emergency purposes earlier, would they also be amenable to having cell phones on them as well?
I think from the county's perspective, they're going to be looking at this for their radios, radio antennas. That would be a, a good question to be able to pose back to that firm if that's something that could be utilized as well.
Because it might be a good use of both.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Seeing done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Hold those in favor. I, oh, look, I don't vote alone on that one, do I? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all very much.